All right, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission for the Town of East Troy for the month of September. Like the record should show that two of our commissions are excused and we have the two alternates, John and Jess, thank you for coming back tonight. How we work is at a split meeting format. This is our informational meeting where we would take all the information, we would have the applicant come up, give us a synopsis of what they're trying to accomplish tonight. We would have some Q and A between the commissioners and the applicant. We will let have the applicant sit down, a short discussion amongst commissioners, and at that point, we would open it up to the audience, look for anybody who would like to speak in favor of their proposal, anybody who would like to speak against the proposal, then if necessary, a short rebuttal from the applicant. We would then adjourn for two weeks, come back and make our decision in two weeks. That being said, if it is a straightforward decision that we feel we can make tonight, we will make it tonight. So the first item on the agenda is to review and approve Plan Commission minutes from June 5th, July 11th, July 17th, August 7th, and August 21st. Are we all squared away on the minutes for those last five meetings now?
I have some punctuation corrections here. If you would like me to read them out.
Please.
Beulah is spelled wrong on July, July 10th. Beulah, and I think you meant to say linear feet, not average on 249, right above that. This is, this is, this is here for linear and then Beulah. Yeah. And then, yeah.
But so as far as the linear feet versus average, that's, that's a bigger difference to me. If, if that, if one was said in the meeting and one is written down in here, so be it. I don't want to make that change without either referring to the video or confirming that, I'm not calling you a liar, but that, that's a big difference between linear feet and average.
Right, and there was a point where it called you an attorney in, in the minutes also, that wasn't corrected. That needs.
I didn't make any corrections between then and now because we did not call.
Okay, yeah, I just, I mean, I just wanted to get these right before it goes to the, I wasn't the only one who sent them back.
Understood.
I just want to get them right.
So why don't we, why don't we hold off on making a decision on these minutes? Are there any minutes that you feel are okay as written that we could vote on?
Yeah, yeah, I think the June 5th minutes that I reviewed, there was one, just one sentence that I found in there that was a little weird, but other than that, it looked really good.
Okay.
But as for the other ones, I gave her a packet of the, this July, July, there's a few in here, July 10th, and all of West Rod Cottage Industries stuff, everything read in this packet, and I think I emailed you on it too.
Yep.
Just punctuation.
Sure, and, and if it's that much, I'd rather not do it as addendum, like, you know, let's vote on it as an addendum, amended, sorry, apology, let's, Jen, maybe touch those up again, get them back out to us, and we'll leave it as an agenda item. But if you're okay with June 6th, 5th, my apologies, June 5th, would anybody else have any objection to June 5th minutes?
No.
Nope.
Then I, I would take a motion just on June 5th.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Should I be voting on this? I was present.
No, no, because this is, this is our current board that's up here now. So this, this commission got these minutes ahead of time in the packet and theoretically reviewed them before tonight, but, fair question, Rich, thank you.
So I'll make a motion to move the Planning Commission minutes of June 5th, 2024.
We have a motion to approve the June 5th. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So the other four, we will keep working on for the next meeting. Next item on the agenda is rezone conditional use, sent back to the Planning Commission after the August 19th. Is that when the town board meeting was, August 19th?
August 19th.
Okay. West Rod, West Rod Cottage Industries, N 8828 Stringers Bridge Road, East Troy, parcel PET 1800006A. Can anyone let us know what's changed from last night?
I'd like to give you guys something I can do off of the DNR website here.
Are we supposed to accept things?
It follows, it follows with what I'm talking about.
If it's what he's basically bringing as his presentation material.
I already have that pulled out here. Yeah.
Do you want it on the record?
Yes, I'm sorry. So what I have, that I've re-presented to the town board, and they instructed that I needed to come back down to see you guys here at the Planning Commission. So I looked at the packets online yesterday, and I believe you guys have this picture in your packets. Okay, that's one of your packets there. And then you have the still shot that shows a timestamp off my old, old phone from 2011. And then what I also have here, and I don't think you guys have ever seen this before, it's a June 5th letter dated 2012, and it's from the town attorney, Attorney Mills, and it's to this board, to the Planning Commission. And basically, it states right in there, I have the highlighted parts, she, she did state that the number of piers and watercraft that John had at his property has been grandfathered due to new legislation that went into effect on April 17th. So with that being said, everything that I had there in 2011, which is very well documented on that picture there, is grandfathered. So in the mystery where we came up with 249 feet, Attorney Mills's other letter, he stated he got that off my peer application, which he states he cannot find now. So he made his letter correspondence to Darren Schwenk at Walworth County, that's where he got the 249 foot mark. So basically, I brought this evidence to present to the town board, and the town board stated that I really should come back down to the Planning Commission in case anybody from the public wants to have a kick at it or talk about it or whatever, just to be fair about it. So I'm coming back down and I'm sharing it with you guys here. Here's my application that I turned into the town, and I turned in for a rezone and a conditional use, and I'm just respectfully requesting that you act on both of my things that I applied and paid for here when I originally came to the Planning Commission, and that's pretty much all I have.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? All right, thanks. Just discussion amongst commissioners. To me, this is, again, I'm one of seven, this really doesn't change anything with regards to what rezone, how many boats were on site in 2011, or 12, or whenever these pictures were taken, so that's, that's my take, so.
Yeah, I have the same, same opinion, nothing that's been presented would change the decision I made on this matter.
On this picture, there's a, there's a house that's sitting in the back of these. So, and I, I guess I never spoke at all, I'm getting, I'm a new guy here, I don't really know you guys. But the reason I voted in favor of it is I saw that there was a residence on his surveys from 2012, 2001, and 1986, all the way back to when Fred Meyer owned it. I got a little, you know, I'm a little confused on it, so I ended up calling Darren Schwencky on this. I spoke to him at length about this, he told me that this parcel is not zoned correctly, it was a mapping error quote from him, and that, I, then I asked him, have you came across a property with a single family dwelling on a C4 property?
So I gotta stop you there, that was not a dwelling, that thing was dilapidated. Dwelling needs to have a toilet, it did not have a toilet.
It has, it has piping in it.
It did not when I looked at it, because I was on the board in 2012 when this came up last night, and that was still standing, and it was barely standing, so.
Correct.
The next windy day may have blown it down. I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you per se.
Right.
But to say that there was a dwelling there, sure, there were a couple sticks leaning together, but that's about all that was.
Right, and it says at both side, on both sides of the property on this 2001 survey that there's iron, one inch iron pipe on it. So that's why I asked Darren about, about this property, he told me that there's other properties that are zoned C4 with, with a single family dwelling on them, one of them being John Tyson's property previously, and it got corrected, and same with West Rod, or West Bay Road where I live. So that is ultimately like, you know, what I was looking at, and I know a lot of people want to think that, you know, I'm, I'm like being, I'm just a puppet or something with Mr. Stoss here, but I do want to say that is not the case. I did a lot of research into this thing, I ran on pro-business and property rights, that's, and ultimately, that's when, when Darren tells me that it's not zoned right, and I see that there's a residence on there, and a garage, and a shed, it's kind of like, you know, I don't know, yeah, I, I, do you see where I'm coming from a little bit?
So on that note, I mean, we did this, I don't think any of this is new, I, I don't need a picture to know that there was a cottage there one time, because I looked at the surveys from 202012 and it noted the cottage there as well. I don't think there's any dispute as to, you know, this, this is likely not all wetland, right? But we, we don't have a current wetland delineation survey to determine what is and what isn't wetland. It's, it's well out of date by years, and I confirmed that with SURPAC and reviewed the DNR regs on that note. Beyond that, the sticking point for me on the zoning, another sticking point is this is less than half an acre. I live, I currently live on a conforming C2 parcel, it's five acres, okay? And the setback requirements are pretty significant, so if we were, the applicant's asking for C2, now it's not implying C2, because there's no way that it's any setbacks for C2, and it's less than 10% of a minimal lot size for C2. So to me, C2 is wholly inappropriate.
Okay, yeah, I mean, there is, it is a lot of record, and Darren also gave me a backstory on the neighboring property to the north, that was also all C4 too, yes, it is more than five acres, but they were both C1 in 1975, and between 1980 and 85, they started doing C4 zoning around the lake, and then in the 90s, the neighboring parcel to the north got changed to C2. So that, that's what I got from him. But yeah, that, that's ultimately what, what made my decision. So I'm, I'm new to this, I'm going to lean on you guys for a lot of stuff, so.
I, I just think, like, and, and we, we have these substandard or miszoned properties come up from time to time, because it's, you know, zoning was put in place, what, in the 70s, and someone took a marker and marked it all up, and, and we correct these things from time to time, you know, we have substandard A1 parcels that come to us, this is a, this is an odd parcel you might consider. It's, to me, it's just, I mean, you could weigh the merits of whether or not this is residential, but it's not C2 to me.
I, I also talked to Darren a while back, and I think a few points that I'd like to make. You cannot dispute that that shoreline is C4, and with it being C4, the state of Wisconsin has never, ever, a property has never been changed, shoreline at C4 is something less than that, and I personally do not want to be part of changing the rules and regulations on the lake that are supposed to protect and act as a filter for the lake. That's a key, key, huge issue. As far as the building that was on there, I have been on the lake since 2000, I'll call that a shed at best. The building that you're referring to as a residence, if that is the building, it's a shed. So to me, the C4 is something that has never been changed, states behind that, we would be establishing a new precedence, and there won't be a huge can of worms on this lake and all other lakes.
I, I agree with everything you just said, it would be irresponsible of us to change the zoning from C4 to C2.
Correct.
Especially in light of the fact that it's a sensitive area and a critical habitat.
Any other discussion amongst commissioners? Then I would open up to the audience, would anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of their proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal? Please, name and address if you would.
Pat Erdian, W 1905, pastime. I'm the chair of the Lake Beulah Management District, I did submit a letter, I just learned to confine my comments to that letter, and sort of rest on my comments with regards to the rezone. As ordered in my letter, even if this photo is authentic, it, the statute is very, very clear, no matter what that letter says, it doesn't change the wording of the statute. If it grandfathered anything, it doesn't grandfather boats, okay? It doesn't grandfather everything in the picture, picture. We can't extrapolate from that letter, we can't extrapolate from an inaccurate legal And then I wanted to kind of reiterate, you know, the, Walworth County cited it for having those boats there, okay? They weren't legal then, they aren't legal now, and I, I just, on behalf of the Lake District, I'll confine my comments to that, it's not an appropriate petition to rezone, it's not C2 property. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to speak against the proposal?
John Becker, W 1958, pastime lane, did some research on the structure that was there, and Linda Zerner is sort of an expert on it, but it goes back about 100 years, and it was a hunting shack. The hunters would come here, and they would stay there overnight because they want to go duck hunting very early in the morning, and it just had place for them to sleep, and that was it. And it goes back 100 years, and then over time, it just deteriorated. So it never was a cottage per se, but it was a hunting shack, and I think this is accurate, I've talked to some of the old timers on the lake, and they confirm that, just a matter of reference there.
Thank you.
But certainly against this thing for all the reasons, and no use repeating them, it gives them all over the place.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to speak against the proposal? If you could, name and address for the, for the record.
Bernard Wong, N 8634 Stringers Bridge Road. I've lived here since 45. I knew Fred's tap pretty good, too. Now these are pictures starting in 2005, 2010, showing that in 2010, there were not two piers there. That was built 2011, just before getting grandfathered in, and I just wanted to make you aware of that. May have no decision on what you see, except that you have pictures that you can see what was there before, that's all.
Thank you. John, would you like to say anything else in, in response to the comments?
So I'm going to make reference to Attorney Mills's letter of June 5th, which you guys all have a copy of. He was corresponding with Pam Shenzy, who was our water management specialist for, from the DNR at that point, and what Attorney Mills put in that letter is clearly shown on the DNR's website right now. I printed this off a week or two back, and basically, it tells you how many boats you can have. Then under the bottom, it says piers placed before April 17, 2012, our grandfather, keep existing boat slip usage. So what you saw in 2011 there is grandfathered. So the question is, am I going to have 10 of my own boats sitting there? Am I going to have eight boats sitting there so somebody can come and enjoy the lake and visit Fred's tap that can't fit through the culvert? That's really the question here, the boats are going to be there no matter what. So do you guys want to lock down the lake so people don't have a place to go? There's one place to go right now currently on Lake Beulah, unless you're a member of the yacht club, then you can go to the yacht club, but there's only 183 families that get to enjoy the yacht club. So the yacht club is in a viable option for the general public. So there's, you know, 500 people that live on the lake, 183 households that are at the yacht club, and the rest of the township, the other 4,000 or so, they have to go wherever they can go to enjoy a beer, a sandwich, whatever, watch a Packer game, whatever. So the, the bottom line is, if you guys want to vote no, you vote no, but the bottom line is, it's reflective on this board, the way you vote, the way people are going to see you, and when I was a kid back in the 80s and 90s and I was around here, there were seven spots you could go and enjoy yourself on Lake Beulah. We have one right now, and two if you include the yacht club, if you're lucky enough to be a member of the yacht club, you got two spots on the lake. So there's different times, and I agree, we all have to protect the lake, I'm not here to destroy the lake, I don't want to see anybody destroy the lake for that matter, but we have to be realistic about how we use the lake. It says it right in the Management District's own website, the Public Water Trust Act, it's right out of the state of Wisconsin constitution, and it ensures the public has a right to use these inland bodies of water, that includes Lake Beulah. So I point out the obvious, I come not with my opinion, but I come with documents, facts, pictures, documentation for you guys to chew on, and, you know, all I ask is I hope you make the right decision, and I hope you act on both things that I applied for, the rezone and the conditional.
But to that, to that effect, why can't you open Fred's tap right now?
Because.
It has nothing to do with rezoning a piece of property across the street.
Correct, but here, here's the problem, Joel.
And we all have choices.
Here's the problem, Joel, if I open Fred's tap right now, if I stick another $50,000 into it, which I plan on doing, but I'm going to be irritating the hell out of all my neighbors over there. Right now, I don't have anybody parking in anybody's driveway or at the foot of their driveway, I don't have any cars where they don't belong, and I wanted to keep it that way. Out of respect for my neighbors that are neighboring my area over there, I don't have Fred's cranked wide open. You're right, I could open it up, get it compliant, I could open it up, but the problem is, if you came by on a Saturday, and John Becker can attest, because he drives by on occasion on Saturdays, it's pretty full over there, and we're running at 20 to 25% capacity. So out of respect for my neighbors, that's why I haven't cranked the bar all the open. I'm trying to get people to stay on my own.
And if you had any more parking spots, you can open wide up, because that's what you're asking.
Yes, I believe if I had eight more spots, I could keep the people on my property and not bother my neighbors, because the last thing I want is my neighbors to come down here and say, yeah, he had cars parked, two cars parked, that's my driveway, I could barely back my car, I don't want that action. That's why I'm taking the path I'm taking right now, so, thanks.
All right, um, again, again, I don't know if, if anything in the next two weeks would change anyone's opinion, if anyone would make a motion, I think we could act on this tonight.
Can we correct a statement or two first, or?
In response to Mr. Stoss, that's his statement, and it's in the record, we don't need to argue with it.
Okay.
Would anybody like to make a motion tonight?
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezone as presented, and.
Approve?
Approve.
We're supposed to do that. We'll have some motion.
No, my apologies, okay, yes, I was the one that set the rules, yes, thank you, Ben, yes, okay.
All right, the rezone as presented, north 8828 Stringers Bridge Road from C4 to C2.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails. Next item on the agenda is a setback variance for Sanitary District number two, W 1138 Spleesconee Road, parcel PA 10650001. Chuck, if you want to give us a little background.
Yeah, I'm Chuck Deckard, I'm the treasurer for the Sanitary District number two. We are in the midst of a contract to upgrade the main pump station for the Sanitary District. I don't know if everybody's aware of, we service about 425 homes around Potter's Lake and surrounding Potter's Lake, so we're just a collection system, it's all pumped to this lot on Spleesconee, it's collected in a deep well, and then it's pumped to the building of East Troy to be treated in the wastewater treatment plant. The current system is, was built in 1982, and it's, what's there is a 25 foot, eight by eight well for collecting, and the pumps for the system are 25 feet in the ground level with the bottom of the well. Reason that was being in in 1982, they didn't really have the pump technology to put large submersible pumps in the, in the system, or into the well. The pump house now is 25 feet in the ground, it's made of metal, it's 40 some years old, it's deteriorating to the point where it's nearly be replaced, or, you know, it's going to collapse. So the, the thing is now the upgrade, because now the pump technology is available to put the pumps right into the well, and that's what we, we've already gone through the bidding process, we already have contractor in the process of that. But unbeknownst to us, the lot is zoned agricultural, and that requirement of that is a 50 foot setback, and the lot's only 100 foot wide. So what we need to do is, we're going to be eliminating this, like, there's a little elevator, a one man elevator that goes down to this pump house, we're eliminating that, and some of the piping that comes out of these new, new pumps, it's going to have to go into a little eight by 10 shed, it's the check valves and the, mainly the measuring meter, the water, the, the flow meter. All the controls are in a garage, it's on the same property. So I, that was all kind of this dump back on me, and I've been dealing with Darren at the, at the county, and so what ended up happening is we had to file for the permit that was rejected, now we filed for the variance. So what we're looking for is this little eight by 10, single story heated building will be approximately about 24 to 27 feet from the lot line. And come to find out that when, when I went to the county, the garage that's on there was not part of the original plan, so that's why we really didn't have a grandfather, you know, situation where we were, you know, within the setback, so this building is required of variance.
So the building exists, you're not getting to it.
No, what we're doing is we're building a separate little eight by 10, it'll be heated, it'll have.
It's all below grade right now, right?
Yeah, right now, so hey, I would.
It's a manhole, almost.
What's happening, it's being latched, round, round elevator shaft, yeah, we take it person to person when they go down.
Is that Park 3 in the association? Is that Park 3 right next to, in, on that same lot, is that by the.
Now this is where Spleesconee goes away from the lake, and what's, what's happening is from there, it runs out Spleesconee, goes under 43, and we pump it all the way to the quick draw, and then we just fall into the village's gravity system.
Yeah.
So it's a little, it's a six inch force mainly, right?
Yeah.
But these pipes we're talking about now, the, the main collection pipes are eight inch and stuff.
Sounds like it's a health and safety need.
Well, yeah, the thing is, when you're doing, when you're working on existing situation, it's a confined space, so I always have to have two people, you want to, you know, we do rebuild and exchange these pumps, you know, every, every so often, you know, every five years, some of that, so you have to create them out of there, create them back in, it's, it's just, it's just really an advancement of technology, plus it'll be more efficient as far as energy use, and you want, the check valves now are, are within the well, they won't be, it's just a bunch of positive, it's just a, it was just a natural upgrading that we needed to do based on the age of the system, it's just that we have this variance issue, so. So what I'm looking for is the approval from you guys, dude, it'll be, and I forget, I apologize, I was really told 24 feet, but I believe it's now 27.4 feet, and I'll get that exact number, because it wasn't really called out on some of the drawings that I have in the package, so. But I am working through this thing right now, because we are actually, we're ready to roll, and we're all, we'll be fighting, if this gets prolonged any longer, we'll probably won't be able to do it till spring, yeah.
Any questions from the commissioners for the applicant?
Are there neighbors directly?
Um, there is one that's on one side, the other side, there's a driveway that goes back to the houses at Memorial over by the freeway. But yeah, it's, it's, here's the thing, is why it's still A2, is that in 1982, when that lot was, that was a farm, that was a cornfield, and Tony just, our Charlie's picked out 100 foot wide by 175 feet deep lot, the thing about it is all the noise, there won't be any increase in noise, or there'll be less activity than there is currently as far as maintenance. The town maintenance staff, you know, we're just a three person board, we rely on the town maintenance staff to maintain the system, you know, we, we contract with them, so from a nuisance standpoint, there won't be anything, it will be, it'll be actually quieter, so.
Safer, sounds like.
Yeah, that's safer.
So, so just to clarify, so you're asking for setback variance of 24 feet, but you might not need that, it might be 27 feet, might.
I think you may, I just, I was told 24 feet initially, when this whole thing. I think, I just, I was told 24 feet initially when this whole thing kind of blew up. And then when we had, one thing that Darren wanted from the, he wanted a surveyed, uh, plot with the, with the building on there. And I believe the number changed and I apologize. I should have had that with me tonight, but I will make sure that that's.
Changed in a manner where you might.
There's no, no, it's, the lot's only 100 feet, 100 feet wide and it's a 50 foot variance. Right now, we can't build anything on it. Yeah, we, I think we.
But if you're asking for 24, you're not going to need, uh.
You're not going to come back and need 20.
No, 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 it'll, it'll be, it'll be, it's in the, like the 25, the 24 to 27.
It'll be more than 23.
Right, yeah. And it's only, like I said, it's only eight by 10 billion until the, the amount of area we're taking up is nothing.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Perfect.
Quick discussion amongst commissioners. Again, it, it's public good. It's a variant setback on A2.
It needs to be upgraded.
And.
I go down in there.
So health and safety.
If it doesn't get upgraded, I suppose this would just start overflowing and.
Well, it affects, some people on this commission more than others.
The pumps and everything is down below. So you have to go down and check everything. And if that starts to fail down there, yeah.
Yeah, well.
If you could just hold off. Um, other discussion amongst commissioners. All right, at this point I'd open up to the audience. Would anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of the proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal? Okay, um, this is, I think we could, uh, make a motion tonight.
I'd make a motion that we approve the setback variance for parcel number PA 10650001.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, pick one. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other, uh, business amongst commissioners? Any other public comment? And then make a motion or I would take a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second and all those in favor? Aye, opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you.